To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Jamie Kendall. Darcy McSwain.
Here.
Paul Jenderski.
Here.
Edgar Tiedoff.
Here.
Michael Nesbitt.
Here.
Kathy Harris.
Here.
And Lois Tylee is absent.
Approval adjusted, adjustments to the agenda?
I make a motion to approve agenda.
I'll support.
Those in favor?
Aye.
We have any announcements, public comment?
I think we have a special announcement, a special presentation or speaker. Mick Levens, your fire chief, like to introduce himself to the council and residents.
Good evening, council members. First of all, welcome to public service. For those that just got elected, welcome to the hot seat. A lot of times when you sit back here, it's really easy to have a simple solution. You'll find out that sometimes the solutions are a little more complicated. I know this because I also serve on the township board, so I've had the same experience. My very first meeting, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to say yea or yes. So when it came time for roll call, I just said present. For those that are coming back, thank you very much for your service. The community definitely appreciate you. Again, my name is Mick. My last name is Levens. I am the fire chief of the Tri-Township Fire District. I do talk a little fast because of my military background. I apologize. Anybody else speak real fast up here? Okay, I'll try to slow it down just a little bit. The Tri-Township Fire District was created in nineteen sixty-three. Before that, it was just a tr- excuse me, the St. Charles Fire Department. But surrounding communities did not have fire protection, so they partnered up with St. Charles and created a fire district under state statute. The fire district covers Swan Creek Township, St. Charles Township, Village of St. Charles, and Bryant Township, as well as a small portion of Fremont Township. And so that's who we're contracted with. We are governed by a fire board. The fire board has two representatives from each of the townships, except for Fremont Township. Then we also have a roving member, which rotates every two to three years between the three townships, uses as a tiebreaker. And they also are, excuse me, are part of that fire district and part of the fire board. The fire board's job is to make sure that we are being fiscally responsible and we're providing quality services to all the communities we have a contract with. They also hire the fire chief. As the fire chief, my job is to hire the staff or the firefighters, make sure they're properly trained, make sure we're doing, being involved in the community, and ensuring that our fire department is up to the best level that we can to provide effective services for this community and surrounding communities. Last year in two thousand twenty-two, we ran two hundred and sixteen calls. That's just a little less than we normally run, but it was a good year. I'll save this a little bit of my budget too. As the fire chief, I just want to give you a little bit about my background. I was not born here, but I raised, was raised here most of my life. In high school, I was not a great student. My speciali- or my classes that were favorites when I specialized were mostly electives. A little bit of sports, some shop, gym class, and marching band. So I was not a great student in high school. But after high school, I joined the military and it really strained me out. I spent twenty-nine years there through the, part of the active duty Army Reserves and National Guard. I retired from there in two thousand seventeen. And then for like, I got married here. We raised our family here. Like Mr. Mayor talked about last meeting, I could have lived anywhere in the state for my regular job. We'll talk about that in a second. But I chose to stay in the St. Charles community because I liked the community. I think it's safe here. I think we have a decent education system. And I like the people. I like the small town feel, how everybody gets together if somebody's got a problem. We all pitch in and make stuff happen. So again, I could have moved anywhere, but like Mr. Mayor, I stayed right here. On the civilian side, I worked twenty-eight years for the Department of Corrections. I started out in the prison system. But shortly after being hired, I was assigned to their ex-conder unit. Our job was to arrest guys on parole who violated their parole and didn't want to report any longer. As part of that job also, I was attached to a US Marshal Task Force. So I come with a strong background in public service for the criminal justice side, the military side, and the fire side to serve this community. I'm not asking for any money tonight. We don't have any major purchases planned right now, so you don't have to worry about that or discuss it. But I just want to explain to you guys exactly how the fire department is set up, how we operate, who's in charge of what. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any of them. Hope I didn't talk too fast. I only got three minutes. Any questions? Hold on.
Who do you answer to?
I answer to the fire board. They're my boss. They hired me. I answer them. I go to a meeting every single month. I do a fire chief's report with some of the stats over the month. I let them know what's going on, if there are any major expenditures or repairs on fire apparatus or anything like that. That's taken to the board too. A little known fact, if I want to purchase something and it costs more than twenty-five thousand dollars, I have to go to the board, our board first. And then I have to go to each one of the townships and give a presentation of why you need to spend that money, even though it's budgeted. So you guys also have fiscal control as well. You think we're spending some money on stuff we don't need to spend money on.
Is this a shared expense between the tri-counties?
It is. Yep. Everybody has a little piece of the pie. Currently, you're taxed at one point five mils. And that's everybody throughout all three townships, as well as I believe about three in the township too. So yeah, I'm not asking for money. Just want to let you know exactly how we're set up. I know it's kind of unique. There's not too many fire districts in the state of Michigan, but state statute does allow us to do that. Any questions?
Your service.
Thank you, sir. Your service.
They work at the elevator.
Oh, yeah. It's a long, long week. Nothing else? That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Moving on, Spicer Engineer Report.
Three minutes, Hark. Can we get through it all?
Stop it.
Good evening. As the fire chief said, new board members, thank you. Looking forward to working with you guys. Quick introduction. My name is Mitchell Jackman. I'm a project engineer at Spicer Group. I hired in Spicer Group two thousand twelve, started my internships and continued full-time with them. I will not be the only one out here. We have a vast project team. John Oldson, which some of you are familiar with, he's kind of taken a step down and semi-retired from Spicer and engineering. And kind of Mark Norton, who Hart and Jenny had a chance to meet, is going to step up. He's kind of senior client manager, project manager within our department. You'll see Neil Noack out here. He's a design engineer, construction engineer, myself, and whoever it takes to get the job done. We really enjoy working with you. We've got quite a ways on projects and studying the infrastructure system within the village. You know, we could sit here and talk about water, sewer, roads for quite a while. We provide these reports every month for you guys, kind of just with an update on what projects we're working on currently. So I'm going to kind of go through that and get, if there's any questions at any period of time, feel free to interrupt. Like I said, I know some of this will be repeat for some of you and new to others. One of the larger projects we're working on right now is this drinking water asset management grant. In two thousand twenty, Eagle came out with some funding for communities and municipals for their drinking water system to invest into it and study, to see where they can make capital improvement and provide projects that benefit the system as a whole. A big part of this project was the DSMI portion, which is the distribution system material inventory, which a major component of that was the lead services, figuring out where the lead services and what type of services we have in the village. This was a one-hundred percent grant. There was no local match. So we were able to, within the grant so far, complete this twenty percent DSMI verification that EVA required by two thousand twenty-five within the grant, which was all state paid for. And now we're working on our comprehensive asset management report. That will include going in and figuring out level of failure, consequence of failure, risk for all the water assets, water mains, fire hydrants, valves, services within the village, the tank, the master meter pit, and so on. So really getting into the weeds right now and digging through the information that we have and trying to develop the, like I said, a detailed comprehensive plan that's realistic for the village to complete within, you know, the goal is to get the, get a twenty-year capital improvement plan. So I know we've done previous studies, smaller studies to develop this and incorporate it with the rate structure, but this will give us a good chance to really dive into it. Like I said, it's a one-hundred percent grant through Eagle. Any questions before we go to the next Hark? Did we miss anything, Don? On that D-WAN project? So the next project to discuss is the Phase One Water System Improvement. This is a large water main project that we've been working on for two and a half years in the final design process right now. What it boiled down to is from the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen asset management report we did, we have a lot of four-inch and old cast iron water main within the village. So we worked with Don and Hark to specifically identify the areas that we wanted to eliminate this. That was going through break history, where, you know, where residents were having issues. And, you know, really putting a project together that was constructible and feasible within a budget for the village. At this point, we are, the project is right here. Also passed out maps for you guys. It includes work on Bell Ave, East and West, Clinton, West Hosmer, East Hosmer, and then Saginaw Road as well. Based on that map, you can see we're doing some water main replacement. We applied for a category B grant to do roadway improvements within the project limits, which we received. And Hark just received a resolution from M.D.A., allocating the funding, which was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from M.D.A. to pay for a portion of the roadwork that will be completed. And I think it was a forty-seven point three percent or something match is what the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars amounted to. This project is ready to go on the bid. Our intent right now is to bid.
Friday.
Friday. Let me pull up the schedule here quick. I would want to say the bid opening was, it's four weeks from Friday.
February sixteenth.
February sixteenth for the bid opening. So from that point, we will see what, where our bids come in at. Right now, the project's estimated right around three and a half to three point six million dollars. We'll get with bond counsel, what to sell bonds, and anticipating on moving forward with the project coming first. So that's a, this will be a big step in the right direction for the village's water system, as well as, you know, to should clean, clean some of the roads up and offer, you know, one better water quality within the village.
Do we actually have a map of the areas that are the oldest? I mean, you guys were saying it was on the.
We do.
Southeast part of town. There's issues with other places. I mean, we're here like down by my house where we had the water break. How long was that? I'm here in like nineteen forty-ish.
Yeah. So this is probably thirties and forties, thirties and forties, sixties, seventies, eighties.
And it looks like it's going to end right where the water main break was.
It'll probably be, well, well, as we go along, we might even tie in, like we did on the Fulton Hosmer project. They go across this road and tie in and make sure that stops the leaks and mains there, but.
I think we're trying to get the most main for our budget. There is, we're not going to be able to fix everything. We're within a budget.
I know, but I mean. Put our hand out somewhere somehow. There's got to be a way to ask. I mean, all they can say is no.
But if you'd like to come in, we do have maps by the age and the size of the mains and when they're.
Where the problem is, probably should have been addressed first.
Well, I have a set of plans. I can stick around and go through after with you and Hark.
Miami and Bell, there was a couple of problems. That street was tore up for a long time. Just had another issue.
We've got a wish list, but we've only got so much money. We got to get our most main for our budget. I mean, that's kind of how we, we took the water main break history.
People got to have water. I mean, you just don't want to be out there in the middle of winter, digging in the middle of the night again. I'm sure you don't. I mean, some of these problem areas.
We'd love to fix some of the leaks. But yeah, we do, if you want to rebuild, we have maps of the ages and the sizes.
Yeah, that hole was actually pretty big for quite a while. Yeah. I see you guys come down there and finally fill it over with him, but.
That's the recent water main.
That's right here at the.
For perspective, this, this project is about seven hundred thousand dollars more than last year's budget. And that's for everything. That's roads, police, water, sewer, parks, everything.
Does Spicer have an established bid list or is it public?
It's public. So it will be advertised publicly within the village. Paul online. And it's also assigned to a lot of the county.
Right over the hump, right behind the bonded house there, right on Bell Avenue there, right at the home.
And I, and Hark, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in two thousand twenty-eight, there's another capital project in place to address, continue to address. But as these guys stated, you can only do so much in a given time.
Man, realize we only got so much money. Put your hand on, all they can do is tell you no, but I think we just need to keep trying to learn and try and get more. I mean, because we got water system. I mean, water is probably one of our most important resources. Nothing lives without water.
Who should we hold our hand out to is the question.
Just saying. I mean, there's infrastructure bills and stuff that have been through the fed. Don't we put anything in for the feds?
We have.
The state?
We have.
Got wet more.
We applied for three point six through the federal government for this project and we're denied. Of a, you know, a rather large trillion dollar bill.
Hold there, get ahold of somebody and let them know, hey, this is what we got. We got some systems that are older than most people on the ground.
We did. We sent resolutions in, support from the board. We had letters from the superintendent, the fire chief, the police chief, the principal of the school, or the superintendent of the school now. So we have tried.
There's got to be somebody you can scream at for this. But we still keep getting these water main breaks all over and it's just going to get worse. You know it is.
Well, Hark find it or you can scream at it. Sound good?
Yeah. That, it's interesting that you say that. The very same night that our guys were up for a water main break, St. Louis also was out with a railroad track. Flint, there's a few in Flint, a few in Clive. It's not, we're not unique in that respect, but I understand completely what you're saying.
Moving on, contractor just started this week. The mission units at sanitary sewer pump stations, the installation of these mission units will allow DPW to monitor the stations from their cell phones, computers remotely. You know, if there's a power outage, pump is clogged, pump isn't running, they will be notified or be able to watch that.
Quickly, if I'm wrong, if mission point on the water tower goes off, you get alerted?
If it's a low alarm, yep.
Which sometimes can trigger.
Or a high alarm.
High alarm, low alarm will trigger that we, lets us know there's a water leak somewhere or.
When we had that fire hydrant hit over in Clinton, it hit the, hit the low alarm on the water tower. So we, before we even got the call from the resident, we, we knew something was going on, so.
So these mission units will tie right into the water, the mission unit on the water tower. It's all the same electronic platform.
Okay, but that way you know where the leak is?
Well, no.
No. Nope. It just tells us there is one, then you got to go find it. Normally, normally a resident will call nine-one-one or the non-emergency line at the county and they'll call myself or the DPW line. Or they'll call Marguerite sometimes.
The mission unit actually calls the on-call phone directly.
Like I said, with mission units on the pump station, it'll notify Don if a power outage or if a pump is running or a high, again, a high alarm or whatnot. And he'll know there's an issue.
Or if somebody bangs on your door on Christmas at nine o'clock at night. Just a hypothetical.
Last project we're working on currently right now is the Spruce Street sidewalk improvement. This is from, on Spruce Street, from right outside the village hall here, all the way to the end of the village limit. We put together a preliminary estimate of cost, as well as a special assessment district based on lot footage, based on frontage. And I believe you guys have that in front of you. I don't know if there were any questions.
Yeah, I did.
Any questions on how a special assessment district works? We'll go over that.
I actually didn't believe it was going to go out that far. I thought it was just going to go just to.
To the village limit?
Well, to the village limit is Oakley Road. That's a long way down.
Well, it's close. I mean, the sign is. Is that where the village?
Roughly in that area.
Well, it's a half mile.
Either way, that's, you know, that way past the curve. I mean, I used to walk this every day to school. I'm sure Eddie's walked it a couple of times too. We used to cut through the trail right there at Tito's old house. I mean, there is really no access to the school somewhere right there. I don't know if you can do it or how you can do it, but the sidewalk itself, I know it's low over here by the, by the cemetery. I don't know if you can keep it on that side. It just seems silly to, to spend the money on the rural part of it. I mean, if you went out there a little ways to where some of the houses are, you get way out there, like you say, a half mile from Oakley Road. I mean, a couple of houses out there. It just seems like it'd be, our money'd be better spent. Maybe go up just past the apartments and try to somehow tie it into where the kids can actually access the schools without cutting people's, through people's yards.
It's basically up to the residents who live there, if they're willing to pay for it or not.
You know, if there's any kind of access there. I mean, we used to walk through the trail there.
I'm sure Mitch can explain, you might want to explain to them all the, all the special.
So the special assessment district works, how we have it set up, we can set it up, Hark, however we would like to. Essentially, what we did was we took every parcel that was within the village of where the sidewalk was being installed and divided that cost of the project up based on those parcels.
That's what I'm saying. Instead of, I mean, to go out Iskay Road is great. I get it. Said that most of, most of the people are going to be from the apartments coming back and forth to town or to the school. But if we could like, take that away from that farther down section and maybe put it somewhere where it can be better utilized for the school. I mean, going down a long enough farther, or I mean, there's a lot of kids that up and down through there. I don't know. You know what I'm saying? Or even just improve some of the old sidewalks that are tore up.
The concentration of the homes are down by McSwains, down by Spannicles, if they're still there. That's where a majority of the population is. So stop at the apartments.
Just be better, money be better spent with the population. It's like Sam's saying.
I believe this special assessment district was set by an issue that a resident had within the village. That's why the project was put together. Like you said, you know, we could do this project and assess the whole village, every parcel. You know, you could set a special assessment district, however the village wants to assess, assess the properties.
I don't have a problem with it going all the way. I'm just saying.
I live on the road. I live on the road. I ride my bike. I walk. I don't have, I don't really have an issue with the road part, the straight part, hallway to the village. It's, it's a big curve, that there's a big curve out there. That's dangerous. And then to the apartments, I mean, I know there's a blind guy and I think there's a woman in a wheelchair now. It's just that, you know, it's the apartments and that curve. That's kind of all that. I mean, I think that we need to look at, but.
Yeah, it's a safety thing.
So how the special assessment district works then is we set the district based on what we determine the project is going to be and what, you know, as a, as a team, we want to move forward with. And you hold a special meeting. And if fifty percent of the landowners that own the land area within the district agree to move forward with the project, then the project can move forward. If fifty percent of the land area owners do not own or do not agree with the project, it will not move forward.
So it goes by frontage?
Correct.
So it has all or nothing? Is that what you're trying to say?
Fifty-one percent.
Down the whole road.
Which side, which side of the road? Sidewalks on both sides?
Nope, they're crossover. But the special assessment district is set for parcels on both sides of the road. It crosses.
This road, you want, do you want a sidewalk through your frontage? Do you want a sidewalk through your frontage? Don't you live down there? Yeah, yeah.
Who's talking?
Well, I just, I know where you live and Lois lives next to you. I'm like, would you want sidewalk in your frontage?
Hell no. It's going to cost me a lot of money.
That's all I wanted to know.
But also, here's another thing. If we're going to expect the people all, to pay all the way up to the apartments, would that be fair for it not to go in front of me?
Right.
No, it would not. And you can't assess the cemetery. They're all dead in there. So you got to go on the other side.
Valid point.
Oh my goodness. That was good.
But don't you think it'd be more feasible though to have the sidewalk on this side, even though that's low? I mean, that way the kids don't have to cross the road.
I don't think it's feasible to have it anywhere. The kids walk through the woods to the school anyways. You don't see them never walking down that road to go to school. They go through the woods, there's a path there. I drove school bus down there. They never rode from there. Elementary did because they walked to, because they went right in there, picked them up, and took the butts to school.
That was going to be my question, is how much is a sidewalk going to be utilized to make it worth even putting it in?
I'm all for it.
I don't know. That's a lot. All I know is that's a long stretch. That's a long walk. I don't ever see anybody walking down there.
I've seen one person.
I cut through the cemetery when I jogged through that area.
I've seen one person that, the person that is petitioning for this to happen complains about. Well, they're leaving Franks and they're coming down Spruce. There's a sidewalk over here. They didn't even use it. They still walk in the road even when it's an option to them. I should have taken a picture and video and said, well, you can give it to them, but you can't make, you can neither. Though that's the one he's complained about, the person in the wheelchair.
It's different now than when it was when I was younger, obviously, but we just use it all the time, you know? And it only goes so far. But then we'd walk on the side road or up in the grass, maybe cut through the cemetery to get to school. It's by the lake we were.
See there, you're talking about the kids using that road. You cut through the cemetery, they cut through the woods.
Well, it's the time we cut through right behind Tito's house right there. Cut right through to the middle school. That was used for years.
Talking about the apartments using it. They walk through the woods.
Based on what we've put together thus far, I think assessments range from like six, seven thousand dollars all the way up to sixty-five thousand dollars. And again, you, that's broken up and paid over, over the course of what, you know, you meet with bond counsel and figure out how you want to pay the project back and it's assessed accordingly. Like I said, before that even can happen, a district needs to be set and fifty-one percent of the land area needs buying the project. So it's not a done deal yet? No.
Well, I'm trying to get to safety end of it too. Somebody that lived right next door at one time, he was walking from the football game, came through the trail, walking down the road, got hit by a drug driver, up in the air, cracked his head up and killed him right down the road.
That was also, that was also his argument last time from the gentleman who was blind.
Was he used to galerty?
Any questions?
We'll, we'll discuss this in length in the old business as we tabled it and we can kind of move forward, ideas and.
At that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Council meeting, council minutes approval.
I just noticed one. It's just a minor thing. In the minutes. Yep. Just need to add an O on the two special hometown.
Turn your mic on.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. And underneath that, where it says two special hometown, the hero thing we did last month, just need to add an O on the, and a hero. Just a minor thing.
Start calling Mrs. Coates. Catching the errors.
Habit.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Commission and committee reports?
I have a question about the DDA report. In the reading, I see Dever will comment on the DDA Facebook page and would like to see the new businesses in town spotlighted and deals and specials highlighted. We must do more. In what context is that? Is that the DDA needs to do more? Or is it the village clerk needs to go around, interview people, take snapshots, put it on Facebook more?
A little column A, a little column B, I believe.
Are they chipping in for like, because Jenny's job is to do, to be in the village doing village clerk? Not run around for DDA.
Correct. Correct.
So perhaps if they're going, if they want Jenny to do more, maybe Jenny needs, they need to. Maybe Jenny needs, they need to supply Jenny with the right things, maybe she needs to not use her own vehicle, maybe she needs. To not use her own phone to be able to post things and that kinda thing. Maybe the DDA needs to do more.
Or potentially that some salary is paid for out of that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Because when I say we need to do more, is it a DDA or is it who can do it for us? And I know Jenny does a lot for that. So that is kind of a concern, we need to do more, others who need to do more for us while they're trying to do their job. That's my concern.
Is there someone on the DDA that can do this?
I'll, I'll step up and do it. As the executive director, I will, I will do that.
Or I agree with, like he said, you know, some of her salary comes out of that. I had a one here where it said. Um, during public comment, Cornford discussed new hanging baskets and planters for beautification day.
Mm-hmm.
I love the idea of the new, of the hanging baskets and the planters. But I like the, uh, curb flowering, she wants to do away with that?
The, the, the tough part with the curbs is they get, we did, we paid, we had more weeders or hams as, as we call them, um, this year than any other year, I think we had four. Um, and they are taken care of for the first two weeks out of, after beautification day and then summer comes, they get dried out. We have people picking for four hours at a, a time and you can't keep up. She said that she wouldn't let her kids do it, I mean, those, a lot of people have their headphones in, they're just sitting there picking, not even paying attention to the traffic on fifty-two. If something happens, their kid's dead. So she made it a safety issue, um, I think, you know, I think it would be. More efficient for watering purposes, uh, with planters and, and hanging baskets, in my opinion. Obviously, I don't make those decisions, but, uh, it was a safety issue for her, her own personal children and high school children that. Uh, come out for one day for maybe two hours to beautify and then don't come back. Um, I think part of the, the balance that we're working on in, in Kelly's offer to step in. Um, is trying to find more volunteers, uh, for a more consistent effort, if you will.
So are they talking about doing planters on, on, like, say the curbs where there are no flowers?
Perhaps, perhaps, she'd like some more planters downtown, she would like, uh, hanging baskets on the bridges where the, the, uh, Christmas lights were. Um, obviously, they have a meeting coming up, uh, this month or February, Jay, do you recall?
I haven't heard yet.
Okay, they have a meeting coming up.
Specifically, but I know that that's one of the things that we'll be talking about is the curbs because. This year, they didn't look nice until probably September. They look crappy all summer long because nobody was watering them, nobody was cleaning them.
No, they were being washed.
Well, you were watering them, but driving by, they need to be soaked, not just sprinkled.
Go back to grass.
I've been, I've been trying to get them for quite a while to go to planters on the corners. And not do the whole entire length of the curb.
Okay, I'd be okay with that, I just, I just think we need something.
I think it would be easier to water, because you have a big planter with, you know, then you could water it. Really water it.
Have you seen them chestening?
Yes, yes.
And that, and that's, and that is, that is the example that is.
We ain't chestening, I don't wanna copy chestening, I really don't.
But they're beautiful.
We've done, did that too many times.
Those plants are very expensive to, first of all, to buy. And then secondly, to plant, and then you've gotta decide, what are you gonna do with it in winter? Are you gonna put something in it? That's not flowers, but like greenery of some kind and make it look like something?
Well, the, the DDA could buy Christmas decorations to put in.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, but then see where those, where those curbs are is not part of the DDA.
If I lived on a corner like that, I would take care of them myself, but I don't understand.
I know one thing, I planted all them flowers in my frontage on my curb and it took, it's, it's a lot of upkeep. I mean, the weeds, the water, and yeah, they looked great and everything, but I was out there every day. I had to water them, you know, so I mean, we, yes, if we ain't got the, the people to pull them weeds and keep up with it and it's a safety issue, I get that. You know, one quick step off the curb on, right around by Mer- Mercantile Bank there, you're, you're toast, you know.
I mean, it could be a work in progress, you could build something that, that you can remove, that's removed, you can put there and, and pull out if you had to, winter time or whatever. She seems like something in for Christmas, I'm going with that, Halloween, whatever. But it's something you can, you can place there.
I think anything, any kind of planter would be better than those curbs, they're just so high maintenance and.
In the salt and everything, when the winter gets in them.
We do the best we can and we really don't have the time, but we don't like to see them go to heck either, but it's just, there's a lot of maintenance.
There's nothing we could do as far as like getting a kid, like you see, in to pull weeds, now he can, can get the same kid.
Kids don't wanna do this.
Kids don't wanna do this.
We, we hired people to do that, um, we have a CMLCU student, we had a, a high school student, her mother and a couple others. At one point in the summer, I, I asked one DPW member, it took him his whole day, he pulled out every single plant on his particular curb. Mulched it down, re-rode it, tailed it and put the plant back.
Just seeing as far as the watering part, you're gonna have people weed, I mean, you gotta have some kind of a water tank, have somebody drive around, have somebody riding the back, watering it as you please.
We water, I mean, it's.
That's what the DPW does.
You know, they don't see us cause we're out there five o'clock in the morning and they say we don't water.
Absolutely, absolutely.
One of, one of the new ideas I've suggested and asked for MDOT's approval is to put planters on the, the bridge. As you're walking by, I think it looks nice, I think it'd be easier to, uh, to water. Um, I believe Kelly Solis up in, um, Bay City, I've seen him in Boeing City. Um, I think it'd be really cool, uh, MDOT hasn't replied, we've got two emails in to MDOT about this.
He needs to make up with some kind of a design that will work.
And it could be also, what if you, if it's a weight issue, um, but that, we're looking at other ideas to try to move it forward. Um, obviously, we don't have four hundred kids out helping anymore, we have like two hundred and thirty-three. And how many stay for more than four hours? I would, very few.
It's not the way it used to be.
And, and you know, I appreciate Mr. Hollum coming back, and people, we're trying to get to the fifty-year mark and have a huge, um, celebration, but.
Maybe we could reach out to some people in the community that are willing, willing to help.
But we, we, we have, we really have, um.
We're always looking for volunteers.
I've never seen a list where anybody's even asked, so.
Facebook, um, for the most part, I think the school puts something out.
I think so.
Yeah, I'm not saying I never got on Facebook, I don't get on every app.
But that's, that's where the youths are, that's what we're trying to get to, maybe, maybe we could get on the gram or something.
Little Twitter face. See what we can do.
Yeah.
But I'd like to play a thing, like you say, it's hard to keep up.
I think that.
Salt there, like we were saying, in the winter, it's hard to grow stuff because it's all messed up and it's all salt and whatever.
It, it's gonna be a nice combination of the village, the beautification day committee and, and Kelly has the go-between to kinda figure out where we wanna take this for the next fifty years.
Then we'll look at that part on the road, but a couple of years in, we'll have to see if it works, then we can add to it.
Moving on. Communications. This comes from the counties.
We gotta approve these.
Uh, yes.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, committee reports.
Second.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Now on the communications.
Should we accept and file or do we already do that? Accept and file the DDA.
Yeah.
That's what we discussed.
Oh, we did, yep.
Playing the parks?
Winter night hike in Ringwood, five thirty-six, thirty on, uh, February twenty-eighth.
Interesting to see a point park and bring back the ice.
Yeah.
I've had, I've had some interest, uh, a few people brought to my attention about possibly. Filling the skate rink in the park full of water, to, to ice it over for a skate rink, possibly in the future. You know, I thought it might be something worth looking into.
With some cheap enough, you can just like line some.
We just have to, we just have to line it.
Put some water, everybody work, just to be warm, obviously.
Yeah, the weather's, weather's challenging, that's for sure, um.
Yep, um, DDA talked about putting a rink, like a kind of, something you can put in yourself, write it, uh, waterfall. Wasn't very too costly, but that's something during old-fashioned Christmas when people are driving through, they see it, I know if you put a warming center in the pavilion.
Think you probably have to do it ahead of time, set it up.
Which then comes down to the weather, again, um, which in the last couple of years we just haven't had.
Take it to the bad.
Yeah, a few days.
Bad year this year, but have a great year next, next year.
Take advantage of what you can.
Moving on. Paying the claims.
What's the, um. Garber Chevrolet Buick.
The Garber Chevrolet Buick goes the extended cab that we purchased or had an agreement to purchase last year during the budget cycle. Um, due to, uh, some GM, I don't know if it's GM issue or, uh.
It was a supply chain issue and they could.
So the, the price increased by ten thousand dollars. Um, we asked them to work with us, uh, as we are a municipality, we've set the budget.
You want my GM discount?
Yeah, if it helps, uh, the ten thousand dollars less, we'll take it.
Right.
There was a couple issues, they, it was COVID never, we never ran into this before, usually you get a state purchase price and it's good that they were allowed to raise prices. For certain issues during COVID and by the time that the truck was built, the price had went up and they dropped, uh. We had a nine thousand dollar fleet discount, they also discontinued.
So even though you, they, we didn't price it.
Well, we, we had a bid price, we, we did not have a counter.
Oh, okay.
Normally in the past, we got, you get a bid price and they're at a problem, but COVID was. Very strange, I guess, is how I can put it.
We learned that we're, it's not unique to us, what's, we, we called a few other places and they explained the process.
Yeah, I called the, the state dealer and he explained it much better, you, you can put an order in to build anything. But the price is not set till it's picked up to be built. And they're not really building work trucks because they can sell these eighty thousand dollar trucks, if you can build one for eighty, you're not gonna build one for twenty-nine thousand dollars. So even though it's in the queue to be built, they don't necessarily grab it, I guess that's all it was explaining.
So, so what would be the next step if, if we're not getting this truck, is it just hold off? Or is it look around or wait till they get higher in price or?
I, I, well, I, we're, we're gonna do our research, but we have to hold off, hold off. Everything out here, I mean, the way things are going, the next year or two, they're gonna have some issues, I think pricing will actually go down. High interest rates, people are buying vehicles.
We have, we have three hundred fleet vehicles who run in the state of Michigan and we run everything through a leasing program through Enterprise, is that an option? I don't know.
We use, keep them ten, fifteen years so we don't, we don't usually, you know, I think that'd be a high risk.
So if that's the case, then if we decided we weren't gonna take this truck, can we do that?
We did, we did not.
We did not take the truck.
Okay, yeah, it's voided out.
If you look to the right side of the status, it's voided.
I didn't see that over there, okay.
No, we did not.
Okay, okay, sorry, I didn't see that.
I've got questions.
Yes, sir.
Me and you talked about, we don't understand the budget and I don't know exactly, I know we're in the first of the year. Don't understand, but I compare the last month to this month and I really not understanding to, to, to excuse me for a minute, cause I'm not understanding. We're talking like the one-on-one general on our invoice entry dates and whatever, register report. I'm looking at some of the money on this and I'm not really understanding why it isn't similar. The one-on-one general here, you're showing, uh, thirty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-one from last month and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-seven point seven-six. I mean, there's a difference of twenty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-six thirty-two off that, I mean, there, there's a lot of things that I just really don't understand, I really don't.
You know.
So this is just, are you on the back page?
No, it's just, it's right here. Budget or whatever you call it here, showing everything on the claim, invoice, register report for Billy the Saint Charles, invoice entry dates. Both journalized and unjournalized, both open and paid, so this is some of the money that's going in and out.
Yeah.
Really don't understand.
So everything, everything up to that page will tell you exactly what general, um, the line item, the distribution, so a one-on-one will be the general fund?
Okay, you know, and there's a lot of things on here that probably should be better categorized, you got spicers on here, I mean, a couple different times mixed up on here, I wish it was a little more together.
Some's water, some sewer.
I get that, but like even that, I mean, you've got, what I'm not understanding is.
Maybe spicers, guys probably help us out here. I don't understand. What the Kennedy Industries, where the pump station is up Maple Street, why is that? What are we paying them eleven thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars a month for that? I don't get what it does, what it justifies.
Yeah, that's the Mission Square, uh, tower, the technology that we just discussed, that we are upgrading so that we'll get an alert.
That's for equipment we purchase.
Well, I mean, that's, that's staying pretty much the same and I, I get it, I just don't understand how it justify twelve thousand dollars a month, I'm like, holy crap, man. But there's, there's other things, I mean, even, even down here, we're, uh. There's tons of stuff here. Refuge collection, last month was two dol- two hundred and seven dollars, refuge collection, this is thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty, why such a difference?
People are paying their taxes.
Yeah, it's quarterly.
So refuge goes on your taxes, so as they're paying their township taxes?
I'm saying there's such a difference, two hundred and seven twenty-five to thirteen thousand, I, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's on here that's just like that.
Yeah, the refuge bill is paid quarterly, correct?
But, not by us.
Residents pay yearly, plus the taxes yearly.
And can you explain to me what other village properties are?
So that's parks, um, buildings and grounds. So anything, this building, DPW barn, anything in the parks, that's, that's other village properties.
Well, shouldn't that be kinda steady and the same? Ten thousand last month, it went up two thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars.
But it's not going towards the same things.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not understanding.
It's seasonal, it's.
Excuse my ignorance, but I just don't understand it, so I'm just, I want a better understanding of how this is operated, I don't get it. You even have the budget from last month to this month, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. And last month, two hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-four thirty-four, difference of four thousand five hundred and thirty-three twenty-four. Why did it go up almost five thousand dollars?
Could be a lot, could be end of the year pension liabilities that we have to pay before the season's over or the year's over. Uh, it could be electricity for the old-fashioned Christmas, the lights on the pools, to consumers, it could be, uh, we purchase things for the DDA. It could be grant funds.
I mean, I'm sorry, I, I'm just asking, but I don't understand.
It's never gonna be the same. I promise you it'll never be the same.
I really wanna understand this a lot better.
I promise you.
Hey Paul, maybe what you could do is sit down with Hart sometime?
Don't we all do that one time a year, just to go?
We're gonna do it, we're gonna do it three times this year. We're gonna do, so next, in February, I will give you the budget, we'll go through line by line.
Come in and, come into his office.
We'll have a special meeting for the budget hearing, uh, or, not even a hearing, just a special meeting on the budget to go through, line by line. And then we'll have again in March to approve the resolutions to approve the budget.
I mean. I get it, but there's, there's, you're trying to cut money, trying to save money, trying to save money. And I don't believe like, some of these guys should be working for nothing, shouldn't, shouldn't have to use their own phone and the police department shouldn't have to. Work extra hours out of their own time to, and not get paid for it, I mean, any, I mean, nobody wants to work for nothing, I mean, they do it out of the. Nicest kindness of their heart to, to help the community, I get it, but we can find money out of here to help them out.
Oh, you got, you got Trump, right?
Put some more overtime in to help the village out.
There's just, it's, it's fluctuating expenses, you drive a truck, right, a big truck? So you have fluctuating expenses, you'll have a month here and there where you'll put brand new tires on that truck. Set of steer tires is sixteen hundred dollars, set of drives is eight hundred dollars. You know what I mean, so every, every month you're gonna fluctuating expenses, that's not the budget.
I get that, but it's not itemized, so you don't know.
Yeah, they're journal entries, right.
Yes, you can say that and I will know that, I itemize all of my, my expenses.
And so everything here is itemized by. And so everything here is itemized by the line item, the one on one three hundred nine seventy zero zero zero. Uh, so that would be one on one general fund. Uh, three hundred would probably be public works.
So every every journal entry has its own set of expenses and once you under- once. Hart helps you understand what that journal entry is comprised of, then you'll know what every journal entry, where those expenses are coming from.
I mean, this is stuff I just don't understand and I just wanted to know, like Gold Negro, I have no idea what that is.
I get that, but we we can't be here till midnight.
Where are you looking, where are you looking, Gold Negro?
Golden Eagle, what is that?
Oh.
Paul needs a tutor, we got him, let's move on.
Um, that was for the police card.
Just a lot of money.
It was, it was for the police card, for the new, they were outfitted the, the Explorer. And Paul, with the refuge collection, that's, we get a bill per month from Mid Michigan Waste Authority. And it's based on tonnage of garbage for the village. And when they send it to me, sometimes it's a month or two months behind your actual month. So when I cut this report and by the time they mail it to me, you might see trash twice on this report one month, but you won't see it the next month. So it's just.
It's two hundred and seven dollars, I'm going, that girl's.
There's the dumpsters too, so there's a dumpster at the Goodrich Building, a dumpster here, yeah, so that's, that kind of cuts into that same.
That in here too.
Yes.
Yeah, everything we do is in here, everything that you get, um, Jenny is cut, I've I've reviewed and Marguerite was re- has reviewed. Uh, we do it basically as part of our audit process, just to make sure that everybody's got eyes on it, so that nothing's coming in and out that shouldn't be. Nobody gets in trouble, the village is well taken care of. We have a great auditor in Darcy.
I don't wanna be out of bounds by asking the questions, but.
Nope, nope.
I just want to understand, I think everybody else here needs to understand where the money's going, so.
Yeah.
And Paul, these are all the village, these are the monthly bills that I just approved, so you are more than welcome to stop in and we can go over them too.
Somebody sees such a fluctuation, I mean, I wouldn't question it if it wasn't such a gap there, you know, but just like, how do you go from two hundred dollars to thirteen thousand?
I'd like to make a motion to uh, pay the bill for the month of December in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand and thirty three dollars and seventy nine cents.
I support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We're just onto new business. John, what's that, Kager?
John Kager.
Right, yes, John Kager. Um, Hart, do you have another pinch of copy of that? My computer's back there now.
I sure do.
We're gonna go dark. Alright, you can barely see that. Um, so I'll be talking from those slides that show up there. So this is really just kind of orientation for uh, folks on the board, so lots of people attending, to get a little sense of. What goes into setting water and sewer rates, um, so you have a sense of what the process is and again, to make sure you understand, um, there's a lot of. Technical stuff in there, but I'll try to simplify it in a way that people can understand and make sense. Um. So first of all, utilities, the water and sewer fund in the village are operated as a business. So we charge rates to cover the costs. People pay according to their usage and to their demand. Potential demand as me- as measured by their meter size. So I'll talk about that a little bit more, but if you have a three quarter inch meter, you're demanding a certain amount of, only so much water can fit through that pipe. If you have a six inch meter, a lot more water can fit through that pipe. So the entire system has to be built. To accommodate every three quarter inch, every two inch, every six inch pipe. And each of them have their own potential demand. So we're allocating some of the costs based on that demand capacity, that's the ready to serve charge. And then there's some usage based costs, electricity, chemicals, things like that, that um, you're paying for. In an ideal world, a utility would charge your fixed costs to a fixed charge. If we did that, most people would never want to pay their water bill because it would be mostly fixed. Um. The former Detroit Water System is now Great Lakes Water Authority. One hundred percent of their sewer charge to their wholesale customers is fixed. Doesn't matter how much water enters the sewer system anymore over there, it's a hundred percent fixed. You're buying water from SAGMA, so there's a portion of that water that comes with a fixed charge and a portion of it is variable. We're then passing those costs on to your customers, so they pay a portion fixed and a portion variable. So we're trying to get people to adjust their behavior. Part of the re- the pricing is, if you price it the right way, people will kind of cut back a little bit on their consumption. There are other places in the country where they really want to encourage people to buy more water, so they keep the rates low. Different ways of doing it. Um. What we're trying to do is avoid any subsidies from the general fund, uh, so that again, these these businesses are paid for by the customers of the business. And water and sewer customers. Rates are the primary revenue source, there's some grants that come in, there's penalties, late charges, a little bit of interest that comes in. Um, and then every now and then, you issue debt to pay for capital, uh, you get debt proceeds. And those can only be used for the capital projects. Go to the next slide. Um. Revenue requirements from rates, so operations and maintenance, that's your day to day staffing, turning the valves, running the electricity. Cleaning things out, um, that's operations and maintenance, just fixing things and whatnot. The big stuff that Mitch was talking about is the capital. Um, and that often approaches the millions of dollars numbers, um, even on a small system like you have here in St. Charles, so. That gets to be the question, is how do we pay for all of that millions of dollars? One option is to go for grants, uh, and to get that. Another option is to go for low interest loans, which you can get, pay back over a longer period. Another option is to go out on the bonding market. Um, you can't just go to the local bank and borrow as a municipality, you're not allowed to do that. We're also looking at system expansion, as more people come onto the system, people buy into the system to be part of it. Um, so if you're a growing community, you might be getting a lot of connection charges, tap in fees and that sort of thing. For a community that's largely stabilized in its growth, you're not getting much revenue from that at all, so it's really rates that are providing most of the revenue. Debt payments, um, are something else that drive the costs, which drive the rates. Um. Regulatory compliance, there's a lot, I was just at a meeting on Monday night, um, on the other side of the state down southwest, um. They are embarking on a twenty four million dollar uh, lead service line replacement program. Um, a million and a half dollars a year, um, and they are asking similar questions, like why can't we get the state to pay for this? Uh, but for now, they have to build it into their rates. We also want to make sure that you're covering, um, cost for billing, meter reading, meter replacements, um, and then there's always the important. Keeping some cash on hand in your reserves. Um. Sometimes when you bond or you have a loan through USDA, you're obligated to maintain a certain level of reserves in the bank. Um, and if you violate that, your bonds can be recalled. So we always want to pay attention to that, if you have a revenue bond, you're always looking to make sure you've covered that. Um, USDA has a different set of policies to follow, uh, for their requirements, but other than that, you want cash on hand. To respond to emergencies, to match grants that might become available, because a lot of the grants aren't just one hundred percent. They might come with a eighty percent or fifty percent or forty percent, you gotta match the other amount. So you gotta have some cash on hand to pay for that. And then there's just the regular daily cash in, cash out, you gotta have money in the bank to pay things, um, until more money comes in. So it's just the the way of doing business. Uh, as I mentioned, the water and sewer systems have a lot of fixed costs, we're not charging all of those fixed costs to your fixed revenues, um, because it just wouldn't work. Um, it puts a lot of burden on the small user when you do that, so we're cognizant of that and we try to balance it out so that. There's an equity involved in all this and some affordability considerations. I'll be presenting next week at another community where. Affordability was a huge issue, um, so we actually set rates, where there is an affordability rate, um. Their situation is they have one major employer, uh, in town, uses a vast amount of water during the summer months. Their peak usage is during the peak usage of the Great Lakes Water Authority system, which means they're paying a premium on top of a premium for their water. And to pass that on to individual families is not appropriate, so we. Structured the rates so that those people are not paying for that industry's costs. Um, so that's what I'm talking about when I say that. Um, we talked about who's paying, um, sorry, go ahead, there you go. Um, like I said, everybody's paying a fixed cost and for usage, uh, the usage is based on your water meter. Sewer is also based on your water meter, we don't have sewer meters, that would be way too expensive, um, so there's a presumption that. Water in, water out. Um, so we're covering those costs based on the same underlying numbers. Um, you also charge slightly higher charges to non owners, people that aren't in the village. Pay a higher price than people that are in the village, uh, because the village customers own the system. As being part of the municipality, if ever a claim was filed against the village. And the court came and issued a demand that you pay something, everybody in the village would be assessed to pay for that. People outside the village wouldn't be assessed. Similarly, when you're bonding to improve the system, that's also serving people outside of the village. You're taking on risk in the debt and you're exposing yourself to a higher potential, you know, default or something. So we want to make sure those people outside of the village are sharing in some of that burden and we do that through the rates, by charging a higher rate for the outside customers. Um, larger users tend to pay a higher fixed cost because their demand is higher, their demand potential, as I said earlier, so. They have the bigger meters, they're the ones who are requiring that the system be oversized for their needs. Um, if you only had residential customers, it'd be a very different size than if you have a large food processing customer. Um, they're gonna require a lot more water, so you have to put that into the equation as well. And I mentioned equity considerations. Alright. Current rate strategy, and I'm not gonna talk about numbers, I think Hart's gonna talk about the actual rates that are coming up, um. We developed the rate strategy that you worked, that's currently being worked with, uh, back in two thousand eighteen nineteen as part of the Saw Grant Program. Um, that was the sanitary stormwater, um, asset management plan. That looked at the entire system of the wastewater and stormwater and decided that these are the critical issues that need to be fixed. Um, and as part of that, we also did a rate study for the water side, integrated them, so we have a model that looks at both sides. So we know the total cost is to customers. Uh, the village does have a rate model that's in Excel, um, it's runs out through twenty twenty nine, it can be extended if it needs to be extended. Uh, but the idea is we're always looking into the future. Ideally, we're looking at least ten years into the future to understand where things are going. Because we want to build a rate trajectory that gets us there without large fluctuations in the rates. Um, we want to smooth it out as much as possible. So that's what that rate model has been doing, uh, I think it's been being implemented year after year, um, and this is another year on that. I would caution that at some point that needs to be updated with real numbers, because now you're getting the real numbers in for these projects. We had estimates from several years ago and now you're getting the real numbers and when the bid packets are opened in the treasury, you'll know what the numbers are. Um, and it'd be good to update that and make sure that your rates that are proposed are actually gonna cover the cost once the debt is issued and you start repaying that. Fortunately, you have about a year before the debt service kicks in, after the bonds are issued. Um, we want to make sure that we've got, um, operations, maintenance, like I said, capital, debt are all covered in there. And the reserve requirements, so the rates are set at a level to make sure you've got all of those costs paid for money going out the door. And you've got enough cash on hand to meet your needs. One thing that's not in here, I'm gonna get a little geeky here, this is a cash basis approach to rate setting. There's another approach that's more complicated, that's called the utility basis, and that factors in depreciation and the variables, we're looking at cash. So cash in, cash out, that's what we're concerned about. Um, so when I'm looking at rates in this model. It's your principal, it's your interest, it's your O and M costs, um, and it's your capital that you're paying with cash. Depreciation is not included in that. I will say, the American Water Works Association, um, in their wisdom. Says that even if you're using the cash basis, you should be at least paying every month in capital or debt service for capital. Depreciation, so if your depreciation is five hundred thousand dollars a year, at least that amount should be reinvested in the system every year. And if you're not putting it in that year, your rates should still be generating that. Because in two years, you're gonna have a million and a half dollar project that you're gonna have to pay for. So your rates are always trying to anticipate the projects that are coming up in the future, not the ones that you're working on from last year. Um, the the model, when we were looking at that, looked at about ten million dollars of investment over ten years in this little village. Um, water sewer systems are expensive, um, and we have historically in this country, underfunded them, period. Um, we are now dealing with these systems that are approaching a hundred years old or more and they're coming out to show their age. As we get older, our knees get weaker, our hips get weaker, things break, water systems do the same thing, sewer systems do the same thing, pumps fail. DPW knows all about that. Um, so we're really trying to start to reinvest in these systems. Council member asked me the other night, do we ever get ahead of the game? And that's the real question here, what does it take to stabilize your systems and then to start actually improving them? Because the systems are degrading at a rate faster than we're replacing them right now, generally speaking. Um, so it takes a lot of investment and a lot of planning to make this happen. Unfortunately, with COVID, supply chain issues, labor issues. Federal and state dollars out there available for these things, there's a lot of demand on all the contractors and all the suppliers that do this type of work. Which means the costs are going up. So even though you might get grant money, you're still paying a higher cost, that's that's the reality. Um, so it will be interesting as you start actually getting the bids in to see how well they line up with what the estimates were several years ago, pre-COVID. Um, when we didn't anticipate any of this. We are looking at a lot of debt over the next few years, uh, to pay for this and how that structure is going to depend on. The timing of your projects, the cost of your projects, and then any other state, federal monies that might become available. Um, so again, if you've got money in the bank, if you remember the old shovel ready projects during the great recession, um, if you have plans. Ready to go and you had some money in the bank, you could get federal dollars instantly. Those communities that didn't have money and didn't have plans, didn't get any money. Um, so it's it's kind of a game that you're always trying to stay on top of and stay ahead of. Um, grant funding obviously reduces the cost that the rate payers have to pay, we want to take advantage of that anytime we can. Unfortunately, there are tens of thousands of other communities competing for those same dollars. And the total debt or backlog of work on water systems in the country is staggering. Number of millions, billions, trillions of dollars. Um, and then I talked about the reserves, we'll go to the next slide. So I talked about some of the rates, um, in your particular system, you have, um, three charges. The ready to serve charge, which is what covers that fixed cost to a degree. Based on meter size, that's fixed for everybody per quarter, doesn't change, um, unless you adjust the rates. Um, the commodity rate is based on your usage, so every unit of water that you use, you pay a little bit more. It's like going to the gas station, you fill up and you pay for whatever you got in gallons. Um, so that's all based on your metered consumption on the water meter. You also have a minimum use charge, which is kind of like a fixed charge, but it's saying that everybody's, we're gonna assume everybody's paying five thou- or. Using five thousand gallons, um, and everybody's gonna pay for that much at least. Um, it's not an ideal way of setting rates, but it was here previously and when we ran the numbers, it was really hard to get rid of that. Without causing a lot of other rates to go up. Um, so it's still in your system, your rate system, um. It's not substantial, um, there are other communities I work with that have a fifteen thousand gallon minimum, um, per quarter, um, which is excessive. So five thousand is fairly reasonable, given that most customers are gonna use close to that at a minimum each quarter. And then as I mentioned, you've got the outside customers paying premium, um, because they're not part of your system or part of your. The village's obligations that come with ownership. So, the next question, how do we stack up to everybody else? My first answer is, it doesn't matter. Your system costs are your system costs, there is not another system in the country that is like yours. You have different soil conditions, you have different river crossings, you have different elevations, you have different materials, different sizes, different customers. Everything is different. If you go from here to Chestnut, their system is different. So you can't necessarily compare how do your rates stack up. Now, if I'm a business owner and I'm looking for a. Now, if I'm a business owner and I'm looking for a place to go, that might be one consideration that I look at, especially if I'm going to be using a lot of water, um, that I will look at, what are the rates? Generally speaking, though, that is not something you can compete on, it's just not an option. You've got to cover your costs, they have to cover their costs, you have other ways of getting businesses, primarily tax incentives, um, and other services that you can offer. So rates are not the place to do that. That said, um, there are other systems or other ways of, of looking at this. People can save water by conserving, um, installing better flushing toilets and shower heads and all of that. Most people have done that already. There's not a lot of additional savings to be reaped there. Now, I will say from personal experience, I happened to get to go on vacation last October and came back and at some point, my wife said, the toilet's leaking. Oh, it wouldn't stop flowing. Okay, so I, I fixed it. We got our water bill. Wow, an extra hundred dollars for that seven days that we were gone for water usage. Partly because I live in a community that has tiered rates and we went over a tier that put us into almost double the rates for water. So we paid an extra hundred dollars of water for a thirty cent piece on the toilet.
You live here in the community, the county?
No, Ann Arbor.
Cheaper.
So even if we try, sometimes we can't always control what our actual uses, but it is a cautionary tale. If you have a faucet leaking or toilet flowing, fix it, that's all that you. Older systems, smaller systems are less efficient than bigger, newer systems, obviously. By upgrading your system, you do get better efficiency in pumps, uh, you get fewer breaks, which reduces the costs, um, but that all takes investments to do that. You are a wholesale customer, as I noted previously, which means you have very little control in the cost of the water that you're purchasing from Saginaw. Um, so they set their rates, they charge you based on your usage, that's that. The best you can do is to try to prevent your system from leaking, to make sure your meters are meat reading accurately and that you're recovering the revenue from your customers. That's the best way to control the wholesale cost issue. Um, you've also got regulations and technology that require higher costs. I mentioned meters. A lot of meter, old meters, and I don't know if you can speak from experience, but they would last twenty years and longer and still be good. A new meter, especially the teller reads, the batteries wear out after ten or twelve years. And it's cheaper to replace the whole head than it is to replace the battery. So like your washing machines and your refrigerators, everything doesn't last as long.
And usually as meters get older, they get less accurate?
Right, there's a lot more inaccuracy in the reading, they tend to read short.
They don't read faster, they read slower.
Right. So you're under-metering your customers. Uh, then I mentioned the cost of materials and the labor and the current market. On the next one. So how do we control all this? First thing is, go back to thinking ahead, planning ahead, um, knowing that over the next ten years, we're trying to fund X amount of capital and X amount of operations. Putting a plan together to get you there as smoothly as possible with as few major impacts to your customers as possible. Take advantage of grant money when it becomes available, whenever it becomes available. Adding new customers is always a way to help, um, if they're connecting to your existing system, if you have to extend your system, that adds another level of cost. If you're working with a developer, they would usually get charged to pay for a lot of those costs, but your operating costs anyway. Um, we talked about the meters, making sure those are working properly, collecting on all of your accounts is proper and appropriate, minimize your leakage, um, don't violate the regulations, state likes to get their money too with penalties, um, so avoid that. Grants and low-interest loans, um, and then again, regular rate adjustments. And then finally, moving forward, um, I would encourage the village to update the rate model. It's a few years old now, I don't know how reliable it is in terms of what's actually happened versus what was projected. One thing I can say, I've been doing this for almost thirty years, I love to say this to council members, because I'm never right. Uh, because I forecast, that's what I do. And I get the best forecast I can or the best information I can, I'm a hundred percent wrong every time. But we're trying to move that needle closer and closer all the time so that we're getting more accurate, but it's always going to be off a little bit, I can't predict that. So update the model with your revenues expenditures, I already updated it with cash, I saw your water fund is down to a hundred fifty thousand dollars in cash, which is getting kind of low. So I would say, make sure you're accounting for your reserves, make sure you're covering your costs, um, and building that model out and keeping it up to date, including the number of customers and volumes. If people are reacting to higher prices by reducing their volume, unfortunately, that means the cost per unit goes up. There's a, there's a fixed cost.
So we spend less or we reduce our water and since you guys are not getting your money, you're going to raise the rates?
The rates are, the rates have to be, have to fund the system.
Need a min-, need a minimum.
There's, there's a certain cost that you have to recover. But to the degree you cut back on variable costs by more efficient.
You're telling us to cut back, but then you say you're going to raise your rates, is that what you just said?
Well, if you reduce your costs, then the rates can go down. If you reduce consumption but keep costs the same, then rates go up.
I know you're just about finished, so I'm going to ask this. You're the water authority, right? So you guys are the ones that sell us the water?
I don't sell them.
I'm not understanding where you're coming from with the water.
I, I am an independent, uh, financial rate guy that looks at rates across many, many communities.
You know, we need to cut back on our costs, but you're saying put in for grants, we don't have the grants, we don't really have the money, we're struggling here trying to do it, the people that are selling us the water, our water mains break, how are they selling us water? Because it's not, it's like somebody running cable in here, Spectrum wants to sell us all the cable, but yeah, the line just broke outside of town, but we're not going to get it. I'm just saying, why aren't they helping us with the cost? Because it's actually, they're actually selling the water to us, can you explain that to me?
Why is Saginaw?
Saginaw, whoever the water authority, whoever you're talking about here, they're sending the money, or sending the water to us and charging us.
One good example is they've lost hun-, thousands of residents, hundreds of res-, thousands of residents, that they are making up the cost on us.
Oh, so, so they're going to use as much, much water, like I'm saying, so they're going to pass the cost on to us?
That water treatment plant in the city of Saginaw has a fixed cost, it doesn't matter if fifty million goes through it or eighty million goes through today, they have to pay their employees.
And they've got a lot of debt.
They have a lot of debt.
I mean, it's, it's not, it's not all based on users.
I'm just saying, what, what, like, I know this happened in Chestening, you probably remember this, they raised the rates, what did the guys do? People went, we're putting wells in, and they went, whoa, you can't do that. Now they're, they're going to take cost.
Where you, where you can.
Yeah, but you know what I'm saying, people just went, screw this, we're not going to pay all these ridiculous rates, our, our water system's screwed up, our, our mains are screwed up, I mean, our sewage system's screwed up because we don't have the money, we can't get the grants, so everything's falling apart, but you're going to charge us more money. That is wrong.
So, so for a quarter of water, you're willing to pay five times that for a cell phone bill? I mean, if you want to get into X's and O's and.
Cell phones got nothing to do with the.
No, no, people are going to, I pay two hundred and thirty-two dollars a month for my cell phone bill, but I'm, I'd gladly pay a hundred and fifty-eight dollars a quarter for water.
Ninety-nine, your next one's free.
So I, I think the challenge here is, first of all, historically, we have underpaid because we've not properly invested in the systems and that's coming back to bite every guy.
Not properly invested in it, but I'm just saying, our infrastructure is not there to handle the system of we're weak, I could take you around this town, I only work for the DPW and I can show you plenty of places where these water mains have broke, and we're trying to replace services because of Flint and whatever happened there, and it, it is overwhelming us as far as our costs. Now, how are we going to, how are we going to, how are we going to recant that, how are we going to get that back?
This is what we're trying to do with the rates now, there was a fourteen-year period where we did not touch the rates. Meanwhile, the city of Saginaw raised the rates at a minimum of five percent every single year of those fourteen years. In fact, they are going to, they're going to actually go through their rates again, a wholesale customer meeting on January twenty-sixth at nine AM, uh, where their people, their version of John Kizer is going to explain to us why they have to jack it up by fourteen percent.
I mean, he could draw this out, at, at all he wants, I mean, I, we, we kind of get, I mean, it, it's costing demand, I get it, but just, I don't see you throwing a big cost at us when you're not, they're sending us the water, but they're not helping us out, they're charging us, but they're not helping us out with the system that they more or less own, that, that's their, their product is being sent to us, but they're not helping us, but we're paying them.
They're selling us a commodity, we own our system.
I'm just saying. You understand what I just said?
No, I don't.
What I just said is, is, everybody just went, screw it, we're, everybody, everybody's doing well, what would they do? They'd throw a fit, because that, that come out of their budget.
So, I mean, to be fair, the village has the option of putting in its own system, that would cost far more.
We get it, we get it.
So, that's, that's the reality. But a-again, to Hart's point, fourteen years, I thought it was eleven or twelve, but fourteen, it's, it's a long time without raising rates and, and that's why you're in the position you're now.
Well, it should be adjusted with the rates that are coming, I mean, the, it just good business sense.
Internal.
Everybody's going to pay for action, I mean, we get it, it's great that you, you don't have to pass that on to us, but really don't have a choice, you're just pushing yourself farther in the hole and then you're going, we need money, well, you just, just took it away from yourself, so.
So that's, that's the difficulty of the council, right? You're, you're sitting on the fence of not hosing the citizens of the village while producing revenue.
We're behosing ourselves, I don't think anybody wants to go there.
While producing revenue for the village, so you, you know what I'm saying? You have to make the money to support the infrastructure while not hosing the citizens of the village, it's a, it's a, it's a tight line.
And, and I often start these meetings, especially with new folks, saying, at this point, we're sliding off the political hat, a little straw hat, putting it over here, and we're putting on the bean counter hat, because now you are the executive board, the fiduciary responsibility for a public utility. If that public utility fails and people have to boil water, you hear about it. If there's a sinkhole because of sewer main broke and it wasn't repaired, it's on you. If your bonds default, it's on you. So this is the, the, to the point, you, you've got a dual responsibility here, you have to keep the system going, you have to approve the money to invest in it, and then you have to approve passing those costs on to the customers.
See, how do you approve the money? We, we can't even get a grant, like you said, where, where you getting the money from?
Well, we just got a three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar grant to start the lead line replacement program, I mean, that's not insignificant.
Say, stop breaking and you, you're just talking like at the end of, we're just broke from nineteen thirty-nine, that is, that's old, that's older than my dad, who's no longer around, so it's like, really?
There are still systems in the state that water is flowing through wooden walls.
Well, I get it, I worked for Boot, I understand.
It's still, still there. But I, I, I was asked to come in and explain this to you, not to get you to cheer me.
Oh, please, please finish before I have a stroke.
So, the bottom line is you do have to adjust rates. I would encourage you, as painful as it is, to adjust them every year, which is why the previous board said, let, give us a five-year plan and we're going to just start working.
And so this continues the five-year plan, um, we do, we are cognizant of the hu- human element, you know, we care about the people that are paying us, we care about their ability to pay, we ca-, we know that some are on fixed incomes, we know that some are on pensions, we, we understand, and it, and it sucks, uh, that something wasn't done for so many years, a decade, over a decade. While, while really the, the city of Saginaw is still trying to make up their loss of population by putting it on the customers. And again, they will be redoing their utility rates, um, this month they're having a meeting to explain to us why they're going to probably jack it up.
We, we can guess about what the, it's probably going to be ten percent a year.
We'll just keep patching our system and.
And that's why we're going, we're bonding out, we're trying to save our money so that we can pay and afford these bond, uh, payments, uh, three point six million dollars, a little small, uh, project in the village.
No, it's, it's substantial, but that's one-third of what we were anticipating over the ten-year period. So, sorry to cause any strokes there, Mr. President.
I gotta cook my kids' chil-, I gotta cook my kids' dinner yet, so if you don't want to be here till midnight.
I understand. So, any other questions?
Thank you, John, I appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
And applause for the.
He's just the blessing.
All right, moving along, resolution twenty-three dash one, amend water rates.
So this will continue the five years, so John was first here in September of twenty nineteen, prior to myself arriving, um, and this is kind of the plan we're on. The council did have a hard time one year, uh, raising rates and they skipped it, and that's why the water fund is still not where it should be. Um, it is a difficult decision, um, as I stated, there is a human element, uh, that we have to be aware of, uh, but in order to continue building this so that we can repair it, as we continue to go after grants, as we look at the state, the revolving fund, as we look at the federal government, um, this is, this is, uh, this is part of that plan. If you want to get dollars and cents, uh, the minimum bill for inside the resident, uh, inside the village would be nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents more quarterly, and this would start in the May billing cycle, not the next one. Uh, outside it would raise it twenty-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
You mean the price of everything else?
So the, so in the village, your minimum bill would be one fifty-eight oh nine, outside would be, uh, two hundred dollars ninety-two cents.
Some of us that are working are probably even so bad, we can probably absorb some of that, but some people that are on a fixed income, I get it, I'm, I'm almost there, I'm got a few years to yep it, I get it. It's, it's inch and pennies.
Motion to amend the water rates?
I'll make a motion to amend, uh, resolution twenty-three dash one, to amend the water rates.
All those opposed, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Takes us down to resolution twenty-three dash two, amend the sewer rates.
Same part, all falls into the same, it's just, I mean, the sewer, uh, the sewer fund is doing much better than the water fund, obviously, um, doesn't have as much cost going out, um, but we will use, be using that fund as it is a business fund to, as part of this project.
And the rates are going up pretty much about the same as the water?
Yeah.
Water and sewer is tied together pretty much, right?
So this is what, every January, we come back to this, um, we analyze where we're at, we, we analyze, um, the numbers, the project we'll have next year, so this, I mean, we go out to bid Friday, we're hoping to have this project done November, we'll probably be paying on that for quite a few years while we're looking at the very next phase two, so.
Motion to approve the sewer rates?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three two, amend the sewer rates.
Support?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It's now the item D, resolution twenty-three dash three, M dot performance resolution for municipalities.
So this is an annual, uh, resolution we pass, uh, or my good buddy Don Hunley sends over, this allows us to hop in the state gateway to apply for, uh, parade permits, whether it's, you know, we're going on fifty-two for Memorial Day, or we're going on fifty-two for homecoming, or if we need right-of-way access for a project, allows us to go on online and kind of easily set up everything, save it all in one portal, so that we can apply and they can approve it a little quicker, so, keeps us in the system so that, um, you know, we can get our permits a little quicker.
Does it cover the Christmas trees on fifty-two?
It does not cover the Christmas trees on fifty-two, it will next year though.
We were informed that we do.
That's why I asked, I thought they would include it.
That's what we have in Newland. It's, it's almost covering up one of our signs, almost.
We use the mid-wire before my conference.
I'll make a motion, we approve the, uh, performance resolution for municipalities.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It's now to item E, M dot good faith offer consent to grade rights, Spur Street.
I discussed the last month, M dots, not the, not the real estate side of it, but I, uh, their permission to access, um, that bridge on the north side. Uh, this is their good faith offer to buy the land until the completion of the product they offered, seven hundred dollars. Uh, I think the maps, I don't know if they came through for you, uh, but showing where they're going to be, uh, kind of what they're doing. This gives them the consent to, uh, basically cut trees, um, shrubs, vegetation as necessary in their judgment to get to the bridge and, uh, store their materials. Uh, this would, it would go effective from, uh, December, when they sent this to the completion of the project, so. No special provisions allowed, but this is the real estate side of it, to continue the project, which, again, they have no, a very wide timeframe. Could be twenty twenty-three, could be end of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Now, this is the bridge.
Correct.
Um, I was driving over that bridge the other day, and I, I don't know if I mentioned it to you, or I mentioned it to them. The trees along the, um, where the, uh.
By the deck pond?
Mm-hmm.
Those are ones I hope they take out.
I was gonna say, they look like they're gonna fall into the river.
Mm-hmm. I'm gonna, if this is approved, I'm going to make that offer that those trees are ready and willing. If they take them out and pull them this way out of the river, would be much appreciated. And then when they're gone, we put in our fishing dock.
I wasn't sure if it was M dot that was supposed to do that, or if it was DNR, or.
Well, I'm sure they're, they're gonna work with DNR, but this gives them the ability to do so.
There's days of fishing off the bridge, drinking four ounces, it's long gone, so.
Now that you don't get caught. I was just talking here.
That's right, where they'll be, I, I imagine they'll take all those trees out, remove them at, at their expense.
Yeah, 'cause they look like they could fall down skiing.
Do we, do we need a motion for this?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, uh, through the good faith offer consent to grade rates on Spur Street.
I support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved. Takes down to item F, Saint Charles area parks and recreation plan, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven.
You have the five-year plan, we held the public hearing on this, uh, there were some suggestions made. I think that we can entail those suggestions into this plan. Uh, the highlights would be, would be, uh, a minimum a hundred thousand dollar playscape for Coal Miners Park, uh, construct a fishing platform at Lumberjack and our waterfall park, pave and gravel the parking areas in the majority of the parks, especially Coal Miners. Uh, add more bench seating at all the parks for patrons to utilize as they run, walk, and bike. Uh, continue to maintain and improve ball diamonds at Coal Miners Area Park. Uh, we've already have one request this year to use for potential tournaments, April twenty-eighth through the thirty-first. Uh, we updated all the, the roofs, uh, we updated the dugouts and the roofs on the dugouts thanks to Sam. Uh, we put in a concession stand that they can now utilize to help fund their programs. And through a partnership with them, we run out the facilities for a dollar a year. Uh, it's a nice partnership, uh, we're hoping to get more use. We're looking at different fields, potentially a T-ball field in the, in the future. So, that is another, uh, agenda item for this, as well as to refurbish the basketball courts as well. And I'd like to probably try to do that as we pave the Coal Miners parking area to, if you, you're up there on a little league night, there's nowhere to park, people are in the grass, and look at taking out some trees, expanding, putting in actual parking spaces, uh, to improve that for everybody. So, if they do that, the paving, kind of like the rubber, um, pellets, when they're there, hey, by the way, we've got a little area over here, you got an extra patch, why don't you put it down? So, uh, we're gonna continue to improve that way. So, we're looking at a minimum of, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the next five years into our park system. Some of this will be general fund dollars, some of this we're looking for grants, some of this will be, uh, public-private partnerships. As we men- as we mentioned, the kayak launch, you know, ten thousand dollars donated by the state bank, um, little update on that. Don and Tito and I went to Corona, uh, and looked at theirs, they have the exact same one, uh, took the measurements, and we're gonna take advantage of this weather and, and start building, so hopefully the kayak launches in a little sooner. Uh, as you'll see in the survey monkey that we sent out, it was kind of surprising, I think it was like sixty percent of residents that voted on that weren't aware that we were getting a kayak launch, so, um, there's still, you know, work to be done to get information out, and that's, uh, that's always a struggle.
How did you get that done? I mean, you just had, how many hoops did you, you were telling me about the, you talked about the bowler thing, you had to do an erosion study and all the goodies?
The, the beauty of that is, to get the grant money, you have to do the erosion, erosion study, the soil, uh, and a, a pediment study. Uh, so this, the way I was able to bypass, we won't say, jump through hoops, uh, it is removable, it is not permanently fixed in there. So, by taking it out in the winter and putting it in, it is a removable, uh, object, and you don't need the studies to do that.
There's nothing physically stays in the river. The head walls built back on the property that it attaches to, so we're not in the river in really any way.
And I applied for grants through, uh, WIN, Central WIN, uh, DNR, several different, uh, waterway programs, and unsuccessful.
Still need to talk about the bowler, not tonight.
So, this would be the plan with your approval, this will go to the townships, uh, for their review and approval.
I think this is a well-thought-out, very thorough plan. I'd like to make a motion to approve for the, uh, Saint Charles area parks and recreation plan, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion approved. Takes down to old business. Item A, one three three North Saginaw Street.
I think we know that this is a moot point at this time.
I don't see Mr. Rappley here, so.
But I think we know that, you know, we're gonna take action since they tabled it, uh, we're gonna just take action on whether or not you think we should.
I mean, is this, that's been stoned, you're going for a fact?
I do not, nope, nothing is done, but.
So, it's still, still up in the air?
Correct.
Last I heard, we never had it, wait for a liquor license.
Correct. Correct.
I mean, yeah, I'm really good with that, I mean, we don't need any more business to go. Because I went through it, I seen at least a dozen businesses that we don't have anymore. The old resale shop right next to the post office, remember Rieger's old party store, you probably don't remember that? Brown's Auto, and Mark's running that? The old red lantern, you got the rustic, the old hotel down there, it used to be a used auto park right across the river. To the southwards, we got the old bowworks, northwards, we got the new bowworks, where the old Rebel gas station was, you had where Marnie's was, you had where Cody's was, coin shops, pretty much done. I don't see anybody up there, which is up there, it looks like they're cleaning some stuff out of there, and the hardware's probably gonna close, so. You're talking a dozen businesses, so. You know, I don't know what we need to do to advertise some kind of a small business loan, maybe give somebody some kind of incentive, and I had said something about maybe an incentive, no tax, no village taxes for a couple of years, or whatever it takes to get some of these people in here, to get some more revenue, but that's not a bad idea, it's, it's something anyways, so. You advertise something to get something going, because that's a lot, and we don't need any more going away, obviously, so.
Well, we, our, our dispute was, is the water.
Correct, this has nothing to do with the personal property taxes, this is whether or not you wanna help them on with this water bill. Which, after that presentation, and after we know that potentially, you know, could be reopening, we do know that PPE, PPP funds were received twice.
Up to about a hundred forty-five thousand, from what, what I could see.
So, decision for you, I think, you know, I think we know what we should do or should not do. But just to, to solidify that we will not be giving any break at this time. That opens a huge can of worms, especially as we're raising rates.
Right. Yeah.
No, you gotta keep him accountable.
Do I hear a motion to not?
I'll make a motion to not, uh, cut any break.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
Nowhere to the Ithaca Road sidewalk.
Yes, the Ithaca Road sidewalk. What do we got on that?
So, you, you have the assessment district, uh, that would require fifty-one percent of residents that are in that district to approve this project. Um, this is a very conservative number, you do have, I believe you have what it would cost each parcel without names. Like Mitch said, upwards of fifty-six thousand dollars, uh, to the, on the low end, I think I saw seven thousand two hundred and nine dollars to be paid out at a, um, a yearly rate on their taxes over a certain period of time chosen by, um, this board, the council. The person that petitioned for this would probably be in charge of getting the fifty-one percent. Um, as you, as you know, we are working on a three point six million dollar project. I can't wait to share the plans with you, uh, we have those, um, it was finalized, but we have something we can show everybody very soon. It's, uh, very elaborate, we're putting in, you know, ADA compliant sidewalks, new, you know, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars worth of new roads. It's a, it's a substantial project, as John said. This is something that, you know, hopefully in the future, we can get to, just like Miami and, and East Bell, and phase two, and phase three, and phase four.
I have a question, just for clarification, if that, if that sidewalk gets approved and goes up from the date and exceeds logic, it may then be denied?
It's a great question.
The other, the other thing I wanna point out is, if, I don't know how many feet it technically is, vice group may know, I'm gonna assume two miles at four feet wide, that's ten thousand four, it's forty thousand feet of sidewalk. I mean, concrete's four dollars a foot right now, for grading, he probably knows more than I do, but I think that might be a little bit.
This is a very conservative number.
Just for clarification, how, what was the potential, or how far was that sidewalk slated to allow?
To the end of the village. North and crossing over to the south at the cemetery.
So, then it would basically go.
You would have to shovel. Yeah, you could huff a nail.
Forty, forty thousand feet at four feet, it's a hundred, or four dollars a foot, it's a hundred and sixty.
It's not cheap.
Yeah, I think so too. I, I'm going really conservative, then at four bucks, I mean, if you grade, grade in one concrete right now, you're on a buddy deal, you can get four or more, so. So, that was my question, is if, if it is approved by the council, to go to, to go, and it be denied, and if it exceeds?
In a later date, it probably could, yeah.
I wanna know if this sidewalk's gonna go down with the person that started this down Lake Shore Drive? Are they gonna be assessed?
Uh, as originally, they were not assessed, uh, I believe we reviewed, and they do have some property, very small amount, that will be assessed.
No, their, their address is on the side road.
The village can set the district, however, the village wants to set and assess based on.
And what we did, we did assess this person, a very small parcel, parcel on here. So, we can move, how would you like to proceed, Mitch? Have the person that petitioned, get them the proper information to begin the file of petition?
We'll have to schedule, we'll have to set the district, and we'll actually have to go through survey parcel data, and.
And we, the village would probably roll those costs into the project.
It, it'll be rolled into the project. Up to get a bond, council, to get.
So, then, we'd have to ask for another bond on top of the three point six million they're already asking for.
Yeah, just. One clarification, and, and it only goes through if fifty-one percent of the people that are in the assessment district approve it.
Correct.
Fifty-one percent of the land area.
So, if someone owns twenty acres, or someone owns thirty acres, compared to someone.
Of these properties, these grounds.
Why don't you tell those landlords what it's gonna cost them? You're not gonna get.
Say, before you had spicers come in here, I mean, why didn't somebody just like, maybe start a petition down the road and go door to door, and maybe ask? Because, like, we know who's on Lake Shore Drive that started this.
Correct.
Why didn't they go down there and maybe knock on a couple of doors and say, it's just a good idea, would you, would you go for it? Before we pick spicers.
Because I know, the cost is gonna roll into this if it's best.
I'm just saying, we really have him engineer the whole thing, lay out the plans and everything, and then maybe we get forty-nine percent, I'll see you, bye.
Well, we have to be prepared too, just in case it does pass. No. They haven't built us for this, I mean, if we get into the engineering of all that, we would, we would work through it.
Do we have to vote on this?
Nope. I think we could just agree that the person that petitioned should start the petition, go start going door to door, bring us the results.
It should've been done.
See if we can get the votes before we start pushing it forward.
All right. Once this is in, does it fall under the same guidelines as the existing sidewalks, where everybody assumes the cost for any repairs and maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's one of the property owners.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't, the village would not be still blowing and plowing it by any means, but we would be paying the yearly cost for upkeep of broken, part of our sidewalk, yeah.
The same as the rest of the sidewalks in town, that wouldn't be assessed to just the homeowners, no?
All right, moving on, uh, department reports, DPW?
On the water end, we did, uh, we pumped fifty-six point nine million gallons last year, that was down about a million gallons from the prior year. Uh, we did have two water main breaks, one on five hundred West Maple and one on four fifteen East Bell. They were both about that nineteen thirty-nine age piping that we were talking about. On the sewer, we pumped sixty-eight point seven million gallons for the year, that was actually down a little bit too from the prior year. Uh, we did discharge the lagoon cell number three. Streets, we did routine solving and plowing, there was actually four events in December, believe it or not. Routine patching parks, uh, we, uh, did get a chance to mulch a few leaves because of the weather, and, uh, found the walking path as needed, we helped get ready for the old-fashioned Christmas and the parade, and. You have any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Oh, I do.
Go ahead, Paul, shoot away.
Well, we still got the blight down there, we took plenty of pictures, and, like I said repeatedly for the last probably eight, nine months, you walk through there with a trash bag, you get maybe ten yards, you could probably fill up a couple trash bags, no problem. Anybody wanna look, look at these, it's terrible. I mean, these, these are act- that is actually one of your trees you planted years ago, right there, and it's got suckers growing out so bad that it's, there, there's a good example of it right there, the sucker growing around there is so bad, they're taller than the trees you planted. You can't even tell there's a pine tree in the middle of that.
The village planted them, I did not.
Whatever, you're part of the village, so if you, you're part of it, we're putting it on you, but there's the number. The grapevines down there are so terrible, it's just ridiculous. You got fallen down trees, I mean, just all the overgrown everything, I mean, there's the, the poison ivy and the grapevines and the picker bushes are ridiculous. Here's a little one, this is really bad, this is right out by the road.
We have a lot of decaying trees around here.
But the problem is, is nothing has been addressed about this, and I've been saying this for nine months, and it hasn't even been addressed at all, nothing.
I got a tree right in my yard, I've been yelling it down at for three years, I mean, I got a, I got a blue, I got a blue. I got a tree right in my yard, I've been yelling at Don that for three years, I mean, I got, I got a blue, I got a blue X.
But that's in your yard, this is on good property.
It's actually not in my yard, it's on the village.
Those trees in the railroad are not village, right?
The, the one off the side, off the even arm.
The village trees, we will be cutting.
These other trees are gone, definitely are, and there's a couple there that were, it's ridiculous, it is ridiculous.
Let's hope the garbage that's blowing there, when we get our new bins, will quit blowing there, that is from people's recycling.
When there's a blue X placed on a tree, how long until it's actually removed, is that like?
Depends if the village council allows us the budget to take care of that tree.
Well, the thing is, we, we talked about.
We know that's why I ran, right, just like get that tree cut down, right?
That's why you were like.
I actually, it can't fall on my swimming pool, I'm sorry.
I, I actually heard, like, I was listening to people vote, they said, is that the guy with the blue X? Yeah, vote for him, yeah.
And I think the window of opportunity closed, we had people that would have actually taken all that tree down and taken them out for free, that window of opportunity may have closed by now. With winter, winter starts, what does everybody want to do? They wanna hoard some wood, it's like burn some wood to get through the winter, well, guess what?
I don't think they want dead pine trees.
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot of good wood in there, I've seen a lot of it, I mean, a lot of it, a lot of it's box elder and naffy shit. There's, there's other stuff that people actually could use in there, there's some dried up stuff that people can use, so, I mean.
No, we, we planned, we'd like some frost in the ground, so we don't care.
You never took care of them, I mean, they probably could have been beautiful trees, I mean, whatever.
As we stated for the previous two months, as soon as they're frosted in the ground and we don't rip up the land, we will take care of those, it is a eyesore, it is a problem, we are aware of it, we will be addressing it.
You can't drive on it now, but the thing is, you could have taken them down, and then once they grown got, got solid, and then drive on and get it out there.
Uh, we're gonna try to, we will get them back.
But, and then we got, the famous Bill Imboll, Bill Imboll, there's your sign. There's a scrimp, we didn't know what to do. There's a look to the right. There's a look to the left. I don't see a sign down either side of that sign. Still seeing that's targeting. Hang on, we're gonna have this conversation, like, one to one for the next four years.
Police, department report?
All right. So we had a, a brief presentation, we're gonna put that off till next month, we have kind of a year-end reporting information, we're gonna put that off as well, um, till month I know, uh, this getting late. The only thing I really have to share about, I'll answer any questions real quick about this report, is our department maintains transparency as a pillar of community fairness. There are many things that we can share with people, so, um, answer questions or address any concerns, so if there's something you'd like to know, please let me know. Have you asked heart questions about what's going on in the police department? It's probably not, you know, the police department is probably dealing with the water or the budget right now. Um, so please don't hesitate to communicate with me and some of those things, our vehicles are tracked by the county, by the state at all times, they're in service and on the road, that information is available to us. Um, if a vehicle's in service, a map will show a location at central and at a state level, and it sets the time and location as well. So, anything that our vehicles are doing is pretty, pretty clearly tracked by the county and the state. Central dispatch then maintains a call log, says that our car was sent to a location at a certain time, this is each of the department or departments or vehicles that were there and the amount of time that it was sent, and then we can compare that to the daily, our officers do a daily report. And during each day, every fifteen to thirty minutes, what they've done throughout the day is documented in the computer system on that day. Um, I'm at avail, I'm available at the department, please don't hesitate to contact me, email me, stop in, um, give me a call. Don't hesitate, I believe transparency and communication is huge for trust, our department, um, appreciates that. Any questions on this report?
I have a question, Julie.
Sure.
Um, this, here, it says takeaway for the month would be treat others as, as you would like to be treated, what exactly?
That, that was just, um, we took a lot of calls, or people, people don't treat each other well, and so, as we go and we deal with, um, people that aren't doing that, if people would learn to be kind and treat people like they would want to be treated, we wouldn't deal with some of the, the calls that we have to deal with. So, so it's just kind of overall, you know. Golden rule that, yeah.
I have another question.
Sure.
Um, I understand there was an incident at the school the other day?
A few days ago, correct.
And there wasn't, our resource officer wasn't there?
Um, she worked four hours a day, four days a week at the school, she was not in service on Monday, uh, and she had training Monday afternoon. So, I'm sorry, she had court on Monday afternoon, so that was her one day this week that she's not there, and we've seen so many, enough situations where there, and it seems like the day she's not there is the day there's an incident, and, uh, unfortunately.
We didn't have a car available in the area either?
Uh, I'm, I was in service, I was at, uh, Bridgeport at the lab dropping off, um, drugs that Officer Thompson had picked up off the street off, uh, Gentleman, I'm, I'm fifty-two. So, yep, that was just the timing, fortunately, and then
Understood.
The county, the county takes thirty to minutes or so too to get there, they're short-staffed and fortunately not able to respond as quickly, so.
Thank you.
All right, Peter.
Thanks, George.
All right, building inspector, code enforcement report.
He was hacking up along it, sounded like. Uh, but as you can see, based on the fiscal year twenty twenty-two permits, eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. That's probably about two, three thousand over a good year, um, for disinformation purposes, there are some years where it's four thousand to eight, it's kind of normal, um, so.
Any public comments?
I would just add, thank you for your work tonight, uh, not easy what we just did, I appreciate that, but I'd like to, I receive some good news, I applied for a, to make us a Tree City USA uh, in September of twenty twenty-two, and I just received this, um, a couple of days ago, so even governments at the state level don't move as fast when you ask for something to be done. Uh, but your Tree City USA application for twenty twenty-two has been reviewed and everything looks to be in order, pending Arbor Day Foundation approval, you can expect to receive your awards via mail in early April. And what this does is allows us to go after grants to take out trees, replace trees, and pay for trees. So, we have received, uh, grants in the past, I think since I've been here, about nine hundred dollars worth of new trees via grants. Um, so this is good news, again, I applied in September, haven't heard anything, and just found out, so, um, this, we will do this in partnership with Beautification Day, also helps them, uh, gives us a little clout around the state, and again, really opens up the grant opportunities for us as far as trees, um, go, so. Good news, and I thought I would share that.
Thank you.
Good job, Hart.
Nice job.
Thank you, Hart.
Hey, it was good to see you.
Yes, Dad, glad to see you. Want to adjourn?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any adjourns?